I didn't see anything else but...
I want to welcome everybody to the City of Des Moines Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for April 18, 2013. I would like to get a few of the rules and regulations out of the way for this evening's meeting, and by that time hopefully we'll be at 6 o'clock. Planning and zoning commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make final decisions on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and preliminary subdivision plots. The commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan or a preliminary subdivision plot is the final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to the city council. You'll need to contact the city clerk or community development department staff for details on those council hearings. This evening the applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request after staff's presentation. Proponents and then opponents are allowed to speak in that order. Okay, okay. With each speaker allowed, they changed up my script here. With each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and after motion the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the issue under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed. There are two items, and I'll get to those in a minute, and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you, when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-283-4209 should special accommodations be required. Assistant listening devices are also available for the meetings in the council chambers. The planning and zoning commission meetings are also broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7 for customers with that service. The broadcast is also streamed live in real-time on the City of Des Moines website at www.dmgov.org. You'll need to click the "Watch Live" link. You won't be able to participate in the discussions that we're having, but you can certainly do that. Kathy, do we have a quorum? Quorum being present? Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Any questions, discussion? Is there a motion?
I have a correction, Will.
You have a correction, Will?
Yeah. On page 36.
Okay.
Clear down at the bottom on the vote. It was 6-3, Jones, Holmes, Corallo, Daniels, and Fitzgerald voted in favor, and Flaherty and Pardee and Fitzgerald voted in opposition, and it was real clever that Tim got to vote twice.
Couldn't make him a mine.
But I think, I think it was Page that made up the three that cast the vote in opposition.
Got that, Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other corrections?
I'm going to abstain.
We have two abstentions. CJ, you're abstaining.
Yeah, I wasn't here either, so I abstained.
Okay, and Greg's abstaining too, so we got three. You got it? Okay. All right, you got it? All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Pose same sign, and we've got three abstentions. Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to take up the public hearing items first, so everybody understands what those items are. Now, there's a request from the Neighborhood Revitalization Board for review and adoption of the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Plan as an element to the Des Moines 2020 Community Development Character Plan. Is there anyone here in opposition to that particular item tonight? In opposition? Any of the commission want to remove that item? Seeing none. We also have a request from Drake University for review and approval of a site plan, Drake University Community Garden, under Design Guidelines for, Guidelines in, in NPC Districts, on property located at 2421 Forest Avenue to allow development of a community garden space. Is there anyone here in opposition to that item tonight? In opposition? Seeing none? Any of the commission want to remove any of those items? Are there any items that we want to put on? Okay, seeing none.
Greg's moving to consent.
All right, and Greg's moving to consent. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
CJ?
From the staff. Are these gardens for the benefit of the public or the neighborhood? Is it just teaching? I was reading both.
I can answer that. It's going to be used both for Drake teaching, but also for people in the neighborhood. So, for example, we're partnering with Forests and Girls Club, which meets at Forest Christian there, and there's going to be, Derek, actually, they care of the gardens largely during the summer there, and we're developing curriculum for the kids.
Sir, if you could please give us your name and address.
I apologize.
That's all right.
I'm Kurt Howard, I teach Department of Science and Policy.
All right. David?
Derek.
David, I'm sorry. David Carrard Howard.
Now Kathy's happy.
Thank you.
That's all right.
And then I have a second question. The plant schedule is fruit trees, and I'm not so sure that we are real successful with fruit trees in our environment here. I mean, especially now that you say it's going to be children involved. Can you elaborate a little bit about why?
Sir, why don't you step up? If we've got, if you're answering these questions, probably best to have you at the podium.
Yeah, so, we've been working with trees forever, and then, and working on selecting varieties of fruit trees and so on with them to make sure that the trees that we select are hardy and all that. I've, I'm also past president of Drake Neighbor Association, and we planted 30 fruit trees in the south side of Drake Park, and those are doing, those are doing nicely. So, we're pretty confident that it's...
They're bearing fruit, I guess that's right.
Yeah, they're bearing, yeah, exactly. And so, as long as we select the right, the right varieties, you know, hardy apples and a number of things like that, we're not concerned about, about not getting fruit off of them.
Peaches and pears are kind of the same.
We, well, let's see. We are asking for one peach tree, and we've been talking about that, but it's, if we choose the reliance peach, we're pretty confident that we can get at least 15 years out of that tree.
I thought you were going to say 15 peaches.
CJ, you want to pull this off, or we, you okay? All right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a motion? Any, any further discussion, Ted?
I'm looking to consult.
I think Greg already did that.
I'm questioning.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Pose same sign. Moving on to item number three. It's a request from John Szysinski to rezon property at 1135 Army Post Road. Eric, you presenting on that one, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Senior City Planner Eric Lundey. This was presented to you last time, but I believe the applicant was not in attendance. I'm not sure if he's here. You're here this evening? Okay, great. I'm not sure how much additional information you want from staff, but I will go through our staff recommendations.
Well, let me ask the, let me ask the commission, anyone here need any additional information? This was previously on our February and then our March schedule.
Basically, our conditions relate to similar conditions that were placed on the extension of commercial to the north of the auto parts store to the east, so they're very comparable to that. In addition, we also wanted to ensure that the site conformance with current landscaping standards was brought into that, and those were spelled out in the staff report so that Mr. Szysinski had those detailed, so he understood what we were asking for to be, to be put in there. It does have an approved site plan, but things that are occurring on the property aren't, don't follow that approved site plan, so I'm not sure there'll be a lot of difficulty in achieving these requirements, but we want to make sure that that is a condition.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
You're saying that the property next door goes up to the, the street behind?
Yeah, can you see this blue line right here?
Yeah.
So, that was a rezoning that occurred in the past. Also had use conditions that were very similar to what we're recommending on this, basically to allow certain uses, but to also protect the surrounding neighborhood by restricting it. They haven't actually taken advantage of that, other than maintaining that as open space. I think there was possibly a desire to extend parking or the building at some point in the past, and it just hasn't happened, so.
Any other questions? Tim?
Do you have the picture, the view, viewable pictures from the side? The street view pictures? No?
This is from the north, so you'd be looking at the north edge of it from the residential property here. Here's looking at it from this, it's 12th, southwest 12th. So, you're looking back into the area that's, and you can see there's a screen fence there now that wraps. This is looking at it, if you drive into the site looking straight to the north, you can see, it's hard to see whether the edges are actually paved or whether they're just parking over them with vehicles. Again, the site plan was approved with a 10-foot landscape perimeter back in the 80s. This is zooming out a little bit, so you can see how the edge is a little closer to the street. This part's already commercially zoned, and there's a five-foot setback here, and you can also see back there.
No, it's a different one.
This is looking at it from the front, off of Army Post, at the, at the business in front, the building. You all right now? This is more zoomed in, looking at the screen fence at the north, and then you can see the building.
I guess my question also is, does the applicant own the property that's adjacent to it inside the L?
Yes.
Yeah. Who owns that house?
Looking back at the map here?
Yeah.
The portion that's being rezoned?
No, the, the house inside the L.
This one right here?
Mm-hmm.
Is this your property?
No, in fact, we mow it for them, but it's been abandoned for many years. Just recently, somebody came in and trimmed a lot of the trees, which was really appreciated.
And this property has not been in conformance for whatever use it is? Has there been any violations? I'm sorry.
I think the violations have been more of the physical nature of what's been, I mean, what's been stored or maintained in that area. You could probably point to the fact that some of the plantings that were in the approved site plan don't, you know, haven't been maintained or not, you know, not there anymore. It was fairly limited compared to what we, we require overstory trees now. I think at the time it was approved, they had some shrubs that were in that perimeter, but, so we would be looking at the two overstory, six evergreens per 100 lineal feet.
Thank you, Eric.
Any other questions?
I guess I'm a little confused, Eric, why it's coming forward. Is it because there were violations with the use that's there, and they need to get it up to current zoning, or why?
I think some of it is to, for the, the owner's legitimacy of the property, perhaps even giving him the option of extending the building into the area at some point in the future, so.
I see.
I'm not sure that the rezoning in itself will solve some of the violations, because if you, if you're talking about inoperable vehicles, for example, that's going to take an M2 zoning. Well, he's not asking for M2 zoning.
And they did in the past have some inoperables on the property, so.
Any other questions?
Can you put up that front picture again that's taken, I think, from Army Post Road? Because the picture, the building in the front is not part of this, right? That just shows what's in behind this.
No, that's already zoned, that's already zoned to C2.
Okay.
So, if you look at the map, you can see, it's hard to see under the, the yellow line, but the, the blue line is where it cuts through the site here.
Tim, you got another question?
Yes, I do. Eric, does he own that property? That's...
This is actually one, one entire parcel, so.
I'm talking, okay, that's what I want to know.
This is all one parcel currently. The zoning line splits between, so he's trying to bring all of the property under the same zone.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? The applicant's here? Could we have him come forward? Eric?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Szysinski. I own the property 1135 Army Post Road, and I live at 350 Georgetown Place in Norwalk currently. Moved there from Des Moines recently. This is a very, very simple situation. I purchased a building in the, if I may, I don't know how to show this. How do I?
Set it back on top of that map.
On where? Oh, right here? Yep. Cool. I purchased, I purchased this building in the, in the 80s to use the upper floor as an office for, for myself. I was, at the time, I was practicing law. My health is deteriorating, and I'm not able to do it anymore. At the time, a company that I purchased it from named Aeroflight had the upper floor. The bottom frontage was used as an stereo, auto stereo and stereo sales business, and in fact, I partnered with the gentleman who owned that to purchase the building. The sides of the building, the rear, as you can see by the high door, and there's two on the other side, this was originally, when it was built, a truck maintenance and repair situation. And I provided, I was fortunate to find a listing agreement from back in the 70s when it was first built. The owner got in trouble and was trying to sell it before it was foreclosed on, with heavy trucks setting out there. So, I mean, it has been used for that. When I purchased the building, both sides of the rear were used as a mechanic shop by the same individual. The, in the time that I've had it, absolutely nothing's been done to the concrete, so if there was a requirement of any kind of sitmax, they were not met when the concrete was poured back in the, in the early 80s. Those vehicles are not there anymore. They're setting on concrete. The concrete goes up to within about three or four feet of the property lines, all the way around it. There's a picture in here that's a misnomer. These are rather old pictures. This is aerial view. Oh, this is it, okay.
John, you're going to step back. They're focusing off your head. There you go.
The, I own the property in the front. It's a gold medal building, two stories. The front is currently a licensed jewelry store slash pawn shop, which has, has all its approvals. I have, the building was divided originally down in the rear, so when the mechanic retired who ran both sides of it, one of his employees took over the east side, and the west side I rented to a gentleman who runs a small engine repair shop, just fixing lawn mowers and chainsaws and whatnot. The area to the rear that's highlighted in brown, when I purchased it, was used for automobile storage. Later, we were informed that we couldn't do that, so there is, there's no cars back there anymore, and there haven't been for years. So, this is an old picture. We put a fence across where, not, not the lower part of the L, but the upper part of the L was fenced off separately, so nobody could put a car there. The reason cars got dumped there is people would bring their cars over or have them delivered there by tow truck, and they just abandoned them because they couldn't afford to pay the mechanic to work on them, or they would have the work done and not be able to pay for them. We even had a couple people just bring them over, and we chased them down and said, "Why is the car?" Well, I needed a place to store it. And so, we've had, we've complained to the police repeatedly. We've had some cars moved, and there was a complaint filed, not in back in the L part or the upper L, but the, the lower part, and that's one of the reasons I'm here. There were a number of inoperable vehicles that had been just dumped there and, or stored there by people who never would come back. And I had nothing to do with it. It was mechanics, and they, they try, but they don't work real hard because they don't want to offend their customers. I was very ill at the time, so pretty much I let the city do what they wanted, and they hauled everything away, and I paid the fines and everything, and that's what triggered this. What we did do with the upper part of the L, it's fenced, is I talked to the city back in, like, 2006, and I said, "What can I do with it? It's just, just concrete." And they, they said I could not build anything on it because of zoning, but I could put temporary buildings there. So, there are three temporary buildings that were brought in and just set there. They're just setting on, on two-by-fours that are used for storage, so things aren't just setting around. The lawnmower shop primarily uses it to store parts and, and lawn mowers that are being worked on that people haven't picked up yet. Immediately to my east, I'm, I know the managers of the store, they have absolutely no problem with the situation. In fact, the guy says, "No, I don't have any problem." He says, "I sell so much to those mechanics that I wouldn't dare want to lose them." I've talked to some of the people on Leland, which is behind it, and I've even got letters from some of them saying, "We don't have a problem with you. Never been a problem," because I've always tried to keep the trees trimmed and the fences, the privacy fences put up. I kept the house that's in the L mode for years because the little old lady who apparently went to a nursing home, who we used to help out once in a while, I don't even know who owns it anymore. It's been sitting vacant, and just recently, I'm happy to say, somebody came in and trimmed a whole lot of the trees because they were really awful. Immediately to the west is an insurance agency, and I've talked to them. They have absolutely no problem with it because it's been this way since 1978 when the building was built. Immediately across the street is Fort Des Moines Church, and they have no problem with it. They said, "We've always been good." We let them use our parking lot on Sundays when they have overflow. The, currently, the mechanics know that if a car sits there without a license plate on it, that they should have it towed. Here's the problem, and we've complained to the police many, many times, and you can check that. Kids come in and they take the license plates off the cars when theirs don't have stickers on them, and they scrape off the stickers and put them on their car, so there's always no plate on the car. At least one of the plates is missing. Secondly, they also come in and cut off the catalytic converters and whatnot. So, we've put lights all the way around it. We've tried to be good neighbors, and the mechanics are doing a pretty good job of making people keep cars out there. Either they come in and tell them whose car it is, and they pay the bill and get it out of there, or they're calling to have them towed now. So, that there are no, there's nothing parked in the upper part of the L anymore. Now, here's the thing. Supposedly, there was a plan filed in the eight, early 80s.
John, we're going to give out another minute.
Okay. Nothing has changed since then. Absolutely nothing. The use has not changed, and the concrete has not changed. The only thing we've done is, there were some shrubs that we took out because people couldn't see around them when they were pulled out on the streets, and we're planting flowers instead. We took down a couple of large trees that people had trouble seeing around that had overgrown, and we're willing to cooperate as far as planting necessary shrubs. It's just, I don't want to pay to tear up concrete, so that's why we're asking to have it rezoned to what everybody thought it always was. And I thank you, unless there's questions.
Greg?
Do you agree with the staff recommendations?
I don't really understand the staff recommendations entirely, other than they say they want some landscaping done, and if that includes shrubbery and trees, I have no problem with that. If it's more than that, I don't, don't know.
Item two says the portion of property being rezoned should be brought into conformance with the city's current minimum landscaping standards, which probably means you need a setback around the perimeter of the parking lot, which means you might have to cut some of it off and plant something.
I would resist that because it was never that way when I purchased it.
So, you don't agree?
I don't agree to cutting up concrete.
Okay.
I would agree to planting shrubbery along the fences, trees in the front, anything like that, but the expense of cutting up all that concrete, which has been there since before the plan was filed, would be exorbitant.
Is the portion near the fence, is that just dirt that's compacted over the years that had grass at one time? Or is that concrete?
No, it's concrete, right up to just a few feet from the fence.
Greg?
We keep that mode.
It mentions in our packet that you were going to have a neighborhood meeting on March 21st and tell us how that went?
We did, and nobody showed up. I got a couple of written responses saying they had no problem. I can provide those. And we've orally talked to the insurance company and Fort Des Moines Church, which owns way past on either side, east and west of their building, and the auto supply store, which owns the property behind their store, and they're, they have the zoning I'm trying to achieve.
Dan?
Greg?
I'll just make a comment that, and I suspect that the rest of the group here will say the same, that if you don't agree to item two, we're probably going to recommend denial, and then I don't know where that puts you.
My health has been in difficulty, and I do not have the funds to spend thousands of dollars to cut out concrete. And the concrete's been there since the 70s or early 80s before I bought the building, so, and the city approved it. Apparently, they inspected it at the time, and it passed, so.
Greg?
A thought I have, and, and I'd be interested in the boards as well, is, you know, if you were to provide a plan showing what you would be willing to do and what you would like to do, so that we understand that versus what staff is saying, you know, I'd be interested in seeing that, and maybe others would too, you know?
Certainly.
Maybe, maybe there is something we could talk about.
Certainly.
About how the board feels.
There is a wide swath between the parking lot and Army Post. There's also a wide swath on the west side, which contains the sidewalk, but a great deal more on 12th Street. The concrete goes up to the fence line on the east side of the building, all the way back to the fence line in the rear of the L and down and around, and all that has privacy fence we put in. So, I mean, I would have no problem in planting everything green space with it. We even cut down two large trees, one to the east and one to the south, which we can replant. I mean, these were very, 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 very large trees, and I was afraid they would fall into the street.
Any other questions?
Now, Mr. Chair and board members, it sounds to me like perhaps we need to ask for a continuance on this item and allow him to sit down and work with staff and see if we can't come up with a plan like Greg said, that we can see actually what's going on.
If I could, I think the site plan's being passed around, shows a 10-foot setback around the perimeter. He doesn't have that today. That's the approved plan. So, at this point, staff's had quite lengthy enforcement history on this property, and our opinion is, is that additional paving is what's allowing some of this illegal parking, and the app content has indicated it hasn't happened for years. This aerial photo is 2012. So, I think you can see on the aerial photo, there have been vehicles stored.
No, it's impossible, because we've had a fence there, and we've had portable buildings there since 2006.
On this area...
On this aerial, it looks like there's stuff there, and that's from the county assessor's website that has a date on it, 2012 year.
Uh, I can go to the assessor's website and, and...
Yeah, I, I, I'm just, I've looked it up on the assessor's website, and it is 2012. So, um, I guess what we would, we would suggest is, is that as the staff recommendation is written, is, was our recommendation. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to ask Mr. Zenzinski, were you notified about the meeting two weeks ago?
Ma'am, I, um, have very bad health problems. Uh, the many two weeks ago, my truck, believe it or not, blew a motor, and it was towed to a mechanic, and the mechanic lifted the window down, and the box with all the envelopes mailed everybody got wet. Um, so, we had to retype and reprint everything and reset the meeting, and...
No, not that meeting. This is our meeting.
No, I mean, but it was set. It had to occur before I could come before you, and we couldn't get it scheduled for any time.
Why he didn't come?
Other than right at the same time as this meeting. So, I asked for a continuance.
You, you asked at that time to have...
Yes, ma'am, in a, in an email.
Ma'am, will we close the hearing?
Well, we haven't opened the hearing yet, but any other questions? Thank you, John.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, anyone here to speak in favor of the application, please come forward in favor of the application. Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Likewise, seeing none. Now, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mike, you have a motion? Greg?
Move staff.
All right. We're going to split this out. The first part is determine whether the proposed rezoning is in conformance, and the, and the indication is it's not. That's the staff recommendation, and they'll take B and C together. All those in favor of, uh, the staff's recommendation with respect to item number A, please signify by raising your right hand. Pose, same sign. Acclamation again. Is there one opposed? I don't think there's any.
John, I just was late.
I didn't see it, so, Mike's in the way. Anyway, um, now, we'll take out B and C. The request to amend the 2020 community development, uh, character plan, uh, to low-density residential and rezone it from R-160 to C2, limited C2. All those in fa, and the staff's recommendation is that that would be okay.
Subject to the conditions.
Subject to conditions, right. Subject to conditions. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Pose, same sign. You're in opposition or in favor? Okay. Acclamation again. Joan didn't raise her hand? I thought she did. Okay. It passes. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number four.
Did we vote on both of the B and C together?
Yeah, you voted on B and C together, yeah. Item number four, requests from FD Des Moines, Iowa, Southwest Ninth LLC, represented by Mitch Phillips, to rezon property at 3911 Southwest Ninth Street and 3915 Southwest Ninth Street. Subjected properties are owned by Don Cooper and Muto Company, represented by Nancy Turner. You presenting on this, Eric?
We do have the applicant here this eve, this evening. He initially, his flight had been canceled out of Chicago somehow, and I'm told that it didn't involve any watercraft to get here, but, uh, he was able to get a flight out and is here this evening, so we are able to proceed with this item. This is a request to rezone another split-zoned property. Again, it's, it comprises two parcels, but each of the parcels is, uh, split-zone.
So, when you look at the balance of what's really the site that they're proposing, um, the east portion is the part requested for rezoning, but the overall site is, uh, the area in the corner, all the way to the intersection and, uh, along the Southwest Ninth Street and along, along Watrous. So, it's about a, what is it about? Three-quarters of an acre, close to three-quarters of an acre total as a site. Uh, they're proposing, uh, just over eight thousand square feet of retail to be located on that site. Um, since we sent out our staff report, they did give us a revision. Um, one of the things that staff was pushing for was to get this building and the, and the paved area of the site as close to the intersection as possible. Now, if you look at the site from the street perspective, if, this is at the northwest corner, um, they will be removing this house, uh, as part of the request for their development. And as you move to the south, along Southwest Ninth, you can see there's a fairly significant terrain difference between street level and where the site, uh, is proposed. Um, you have come and go to the south, which was carved out of a area that was, um, actually elevated higher. I don't know if, when they built Southwest Ninth, they just piled all the material on the east side or something, but, um, along the east side of Southwest Ninth, you basically have, um, higher elevations on the site versus the actual street level, so... Uh, this is looking at, from Watrous to the northwest. Uh, again, there's the house, um, that would be removed. Um, this is the front edge along Watrous that would be involved, and then I'm going to pan toward the right as you go east along Watrous, so you can get a sense of the depth And then, this is the closest house that would be to the east. And so, when you go back to the aerial, that would be, uh, this house right here.
Eric, how deep are those lots?
Um...
That happen acre.
Two-hundred-and-ninety-one and a half feet. Two ninety, two ninety-one and a half.
Okay. And how wide is it across the front?
It is two, two-ten and a half. So, it's pretty square. Well, almost square, but a little bit longer, uh, east and west.
So, it's about an acre.
It's about three-quarters of an acre.
It's about acre and a half.
Is it?
Yeah.
Total? Okay.
Okay.
I must have, oh, I'm talking, it, it's three-quarters of an acre for the rezoning area.
Oh, all right.
The total site is about an acre and a half.
Okay, all right.
Apologize.
Sorry.
Um, I do, I was going to show you the, again, some things about the site. Again, if you see this kind of colored dash line, that's the minimum building setback that's required, and then it also is ten feet from the properties to the east and the north. It's actually zero by the zoning on the north because this is also commercially zoned.
Wow.
But, um, from a site plan perspective, we require a ten-foot separation from any residential use. So, we're, we were trying to get, maximize the ability to get the parking and the building to the southwest. Um, they're proposing detention in this location and some out to the street. The actual storm sewer connection is actually at the southwest corner, so even if they're detaining back here, they're going to have to pipe to that southwest corner. Um, they've actually come back now and shifted mostly to the south. They have about, uh, seven feet proposed now here along the south, which would meet the minimum site plan requirement, um, but they still have about twenty-five to thirty feet, uh, from the west. And again, they, they're probably avoiding that slope on the west.
Eric, just to confirm, the commission's not reviewing the site plan tonight?
No, but one of the condi, I want to point that out because one of our conditions is to maximize the ability to shift the site to the southwest. Um, so, getting to the staff recommendation, this is the, um, consent map I passed around the cards. The two-hundred feet, within two-hundred feet, it's about thirty-eight and a half percent of the area that's an objection, so that does trigger a six, seven vote at this point in time. Um, if, if there's a couple of property owners that are predominant in that, um, that, if they changed or rescinded, they could be brought below. If they don't, even if everybody else rescinds, I think they still exceed twenty percent, Staff does believe that this, in order to get any kind of new development, this, this level of depth is, is necessary along this corridor. It's characterized by very ni, narrow commercial zoning, um, so any redevelopment almost has to, um, look at getting that type of depth. So, we believe that this is in conformance, uh, we, we don't believe it's in conformance with the current community character plan, but we believe it's reasonable and, uh, rational to approve an amendment to allow this rezoning. Um, and then, we do recommend approval of the zoning, but we want to make sure that any site development is pulled away from the ne, neighborhood residential to the east and north as, to the extent possible. Um, we also want to make sure that their, uh, building is three-hundred-and-sixty-degree architecture of the brick material or at the first floor level. Um, that would be in line with our site, uh, uh, commercial tax abatement requirements. Uh, the elevations that were given to us in the concept at first showed just the facades facing the streets. Um, on corner lots, the, the commercial tax abatement does ask for the perpendicular walls also to be, uh, of that material. Then, we also would want to make sure any freestanding sign was a monument sign. They did propose that with their revision. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Eric. Is the applicant here? Please come forward and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name's Mitch Phillips, uh, Seventy West Madison Street, Suite 4500, Chicago, Illinois. Uh, I actually, I actually represent the applicant. Uh, the applicant is a contract purchaser for this property, uh, and a preferred developer for Family Dollar. Um, I, I need to make it clear that we don't represent Family Dollar. Uh, the brand for Family Dollar, uh, has kind of changed. It, although it's called Family Dollar, it's not really a dollar store. It's kind of a variety store, um, and while I'm not speaking for them, they're kind of, they're pushing the brand more towards a Walgreens without photo shops and without pharmacies. Um, we've been working with, uh, the staff on the site plan, as Eric mentioned, um, and just to clarify, we, we did, we moved the site down about twenty feet to kind of move it away from that residential area and closer to the street corner. Um, and as, as he did mention, uh, the reason we didn't go any further is that's, from the comments from our engineer, if we start getting on that slope, it's going to be an issue. Uh, we have agreed with the recommendations of the staff to, uh, put masonry all the way, all the way around the building. Uh, we changed our signage, uh, and we moved it, uh, moved the site down. Um, uh, I guess just as another part of this process, we had our neighborhood plan, or our neighborhood meeting on April third. Um, I, I wasn't there. There was a representative from Family Dollar there, and, uh, an employee of my client was there, um, and also Joe Templeman, who represents the, uh, the property owners, was there. Uh, about ten or fifteen people showed up. Uh, everybody was in support, from what I understand. Uh, no opposition there. Uh, I guess I, I also wanted to, uh, I drove by the site today. I've seen the aerials. Um, it looks like this, uh, it, it's kind of a commercial nature, that area on Southwest Ninth Street. Um, I know there's a come and go across the street. There's a bank, uh, down there, uh, even to the north and south. It looks like there's quite a bit of commercial, so hopefully this, uh, this Family Dollar store fits into the planning there. Um, and I guess I'd take any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one real quick.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry, Greg.
Sure. Can you put back up that site plan? I, I realize we're not reviewing the site plan, but I got a question. I'm just curious how, um, the grading gets handled if, with your western edge of parking and southern edge of parking up to the streets. That, are you keeping the, the berm of grass going up, or does that become a big masonry wall to hold up your parking lot, or...
I, I'm sure there will be some grading there. Um, that's really, I'd have to defer to our engineer on that. Um, I know it's a consideration. I'm, I'm sure, I know that they will work with the city on that. Um, I, I don't, I, I really can't answer that question.
I have a question. I don't know if this is for you or for staff, but in, uh, the natural features of the land, it, uh, points out that there's four or more mature trees that will be impacted by the development, but yet, in staff recommendations, there is no mention of that, and at one and, one and a half or one and three-quarter acres, it does, the mitigation, uh, does come into play, but the mitigation in this city that you're, since you're from Chicago, is a very, very weak plan, and I would like to, um, see if maybe being a good corporate client that you could encourage your developer to save some of those trees because of our urban canopy is quickly disappearing.
Yeah, I, I...
If you could just encourage them, I'd appreciate that.
Definitely. And we, we did a Family Dollar store on Douglas Avenue recently, and landscaping was a big issue, and we complied with what the city wanted, just to let you know.
We need to be above what the city requires, and it's almost a joke, the mitigation.
Okay.
Or news that we have.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Joel Templeman. I'm with the Lewis O'Malley Law Firm, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300, here in Des Moines, and I represent the two current property owners at 3911 and 3915 Southwest Ninth Street. As Mitch indicated, they're the contract sellers to the subject property. I wasn't in, I was in attendance at the neighborhood meeting a few weeks ago. Um, I just wanted to speak to that point. There were approximately ten neighbors that did show up, that had a lot of questions for the, the folks there on behalf of Family Dollar. Family Dollar presented their, um, elevations in the site plan, which has now been revised, answered the neighbors' questions, and it seemed as though the folks that were present were in support of this proposed rezoning and development. Um, some of the comments that I took away from it, they were, they were excited about new development in the area versus, um, having to, you know, new patchwork on certain areas and things like that. So, they were, they were encouraged by the, the prospects of a, of new building coming there. Um, I don't have the roster of the folks that were present at the neighborhood meeting. I presume the Family Dollar folks have that and probably could be shared if, if we can get that, but I was there, uh, on behalf of the two property owners.
Okay. Hold on a second, Joel. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. According to the staff, there was thirty-eight percent opposition within the two-hundred, um, perimeter. Um, are you thinking, or I'm hearing, that this was a meeting of the classic Iowa passive-aggressive? Agree at the meeting and then go home and complain?
I can't answer that, sir. I, I don't know. I, I know what I saw, and I, the comments seem to be supportive of, of the presentation that was made at that time, and I don't, I don't have the roster of the folks that were present. I wish I did, so I could compare that with the notices that were circulated just the other day.
I wonder if Family Dollar has that information.
That's what I...
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward in opposition to the application. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Move staff.
Mike's moving staff. We're going to split that, uh, once again, A and then B and C. Joan?
I'd like to make a comment, too. Um, there's two entities that are very interested in this, not only the neighborhood's location, whose biggest problem here seems to be proper landscaping, uh, and what the building is going to look like. They don't want an odd-looking building there. And then, the Southwest Ninth Merchants Association, which is a fairly new organization that is trying to, uh, revitalize what is going on and, um, what has been for a long time on that street. So, I think, from what I can understand, from what I get, and I go to the meetings often, um, they would be interested in this also if landscaping were proper. And then, of course, um, the neighbors up on the cul-de-sac, I don't know what their problem is, but the, uh, I can imagine lighting, the kind of lighting that go- imagine lighting, the kind of lighting that goes into the back of the stores like we talk about when we talk about convenience stores and stuff like that. They'd want all that away from what they're looking at. But I honestly, in my memory, I remember the Mutos that used to live on that corner, and it was always a very nice, well-kept spot. I'd like to have the mature trees remain because they are big and they are beautiful. And so landscaping, to me, would be a big thing. But personally, I can't see a huge problem with it. It could possibly be a nice addition as far as the building and all. I don't know, is it we need that particular business? But hey, what it looks like is going to be, is going to be okay.
Greg?
Mike, I might offer a couple thoughts as potential friendly amendments, if you're so amenable. One is, when I, and I realize it's not site plan review, but these could potentially be conditions for staff. One is that the development does a better job of making sort of pedestrian connections to the sidewalks for the neighbors to sort of access the building. Right now, this being so far set back and across all the parking lots, I think those could be enhanced and those connections. And I think that would be a really good statement for the neighborhood to sort of connect into the sidewalks and do that.
And like steps up?
Well, just sort of walkways across the parking lot, and maybe there's some sort of landscape connections that connect the front door out to the sidewalks. And I think that would be something that, from a walkable community sort of point of view, would be worth doing, so it's not so suburban feeling. The second thought I offer for you is, I'm a little concerned about the intersection. I think of the solution on the Walgreens at Douglas and Beaver, where you have this massive retaining wall to sort of shore up the parking lot that's right at the intersection, that northwest corner. And I really hope, I mean, this is a beautiful sort of landscape corner. I would hate to see a condition like that happen. Again, I think that would shut it off from the streets and make it feel very isolated. So anyway, I offer those as thoughts. If anyone has any comments, or Mike, you?
Yeah, just real quick. The Walgreens on Douglas, the city went and widened the street in that intersection, rebuilt the intersection. And so that retaining wall at Beaver Avenue and...
Even more deplorable.
Constructed.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Eric? This is coming back to us for site plan, right?
No, it would not.
Okay. If we asked, it would come back to us for site plan?
If you asked, it would. I don't know if that, I mean, I guess I would caution you on that. I think we can achieve or get the types of things that Greg's talking about. I think we asked for those fairly systematically, actually. We didn't, I didn't want to get into the nitty-gritty of site plan review, except for the components that I thought were important in terms of something that the P and Z would put a condition upon. So that's why I was interested in the placement of the building. I think we are sensitive, then, to, based on what Greg is saying, on the west, we probably wouldn't push to have them shift that any further west because that would create that condition of a wall. So leaving it at the 25 to 30-foot setback from Ninth will probably preserve that ability. I'm not sure about detention, how that, they may have to do that underground or something. I don't know what, how that's going to work for them, but...
Eric, I'd like to see you point out on the plan, the mature trees that Joanne had mentioned.
If you look, they're mostly up here with the...
Where the house is.
Where the house is, back in here. There's three here, and then I believe there's one right in here. You might have seen that on the photos. Actually, there's two here, I think.
Eric, I would guess that those southern two would likely be removed for a driveway in public building.
Yeah, based on any of the scenarios that were presented, a couple of them were going to get removed, probably in all likelihood. But I don't know what their species are. We do look at that during site plan review, but if possible, maybe they can get a planter bed around it. My worry is if they just do a planter bed in the parking lot, then it just ends up dying anyway, but...
I had a couple of questions. One was, was I mistaken on one of those cards? Wasn't one of those consent cards from the Neighborhood Association, they approved it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the, the Neighborhood Associations are actually to the west. If you go to the northwest corner, it's Gray's Lake, and to the southwest is Watchers South.
Okay.
But this actually doesn't sit within an actual recognized name.
And then if you could put the drawing back up, because since it, if it doesn't come back, I had a question about, like, when a semi comes to make deliveries, somebody's going to think about this, I'm sure, but it just didn't look like there was adequate entry for something like that.
Actually, that's one of the, one of the things we suggested, was that they could even narrow these. But because of that delivery situation, they're leaving these at 40. Normally, we only require that they be 24. But they're not doing a loading function at the back of the building. So they're going to load everything within the parking lot at, you know, whatever, you know, probably off-hours. So they do need to have that maneuvering wider to make truck templates work through here. They're making a little bit of a wider drive here to get a right turnout, but that probably also preserves their ability to get trucks to maneuver in here. This is more standard because there's a median right here that they aren't going to be able to get a left turnout. So they're only going to have right out and right in, so they don't need to make that wider. But I think these being 40-foot-wide aisles is almost double what our normal requirement is, which is 24 feet. So I think they're going to be able to achieve that. And that'll also help with the concerns about putting lighting along the back of the building. When you don't have those loading functions and circulation behind the building, they don't generally need to light the back of the building as much.
Joanne?
I don't know if you want to put this in staff recommendation or not, but it's just, considering that all the businesses along Southwest Ninth, except like a box store, is very close to the sidewalk, it just seems to me that coming up from the sidewalk, if somebody is walking in the neighborhood, having a sidewalk up to a crosswalk across your parking lot would, I don't know, it would be, it's a friendly gesture. I mean, it gives a homier...
Right now, I mean, this was the original concept submitted with the application. So you can see it was pushed very far to the north, even further to the east even. So they've gone and revised it by pulling it away from the north and slightly to the east, to the west.
Yeah. I'm talking a sidewalk up from Southwest Ninth.
Yeah, if you're, there's going to be a challenge. You're probably only going to get a stairway-type connection, if that's the grade change off of that. But we'll certainly want to get them off the sidewalk here and into the store somewhere along here with a marked route that would go through here.
Another option, Eric, is that moves further to the south and west would be to take it along the edge of the parking lot. Yeah.
Like through here.
Mm-hmm.
And then have it be a non, where you don't cross the actual drive aisle or anything.
Yeah, I mean, we'll probably ask them to do something that would come along this sidewalk here and go, so they're not crossing the driveway.
But avoid a tree.
Yeah, I'm just thinking pedestrian-friendly.
There might be a tree there. Actually, I think the trees are like right here, right there, and right there.
Any other questions, Tim?
Southwest Ninth, can I have the aerial again, Eric? I'm sorry. Southwest Ninth is a street that's been around since the turn of the century, and it was a connector from Fort Des Moines to downtown. There's a trolley there. It used to be paved brick. As you can see, by looking at Southwest Ninth, it's pretty close, is the same width as Watchers. Watchers is a two-lane road, and Southwest Ninth being a four-lane road. It's really tight. And like Joanne mentioned, the businesses were right on top or on top of Southwest Ninth. I mean, literally, probably some buildings are four feet from the street when you open up the door. And these are cars that go in 35, 40 miles an hour at a given time. I just look at this and see an albatross compared to the, to the other businesses that have been there for some, since the 20s. I know that this is a commercial corridor. I also know that we're encroaching a lot on some residential neighborhoods that are, I'm not sure what the answer is. I just see it. You look across the street on Ninth, going to the, I believe, the north, one, two, three, four, four houses just across from the lot we're looking at. So I don't know. I just, I can't support it until I see a site plan, so that's where I'm going to stand with it.
Anybody else?
I'd like it to come back to us, too.
I'd like to come back to us, too, and see how they're going to handle the drainage in this area, which seems to be quite tight and subject to a lot of water.
Greg? This is Mike's motion. Okay, Mike?
I agree with Greg's comment so hardly. I think if we want to reduce 11A retaining walls, the building is going to be pushed back from the street path down. So they might end up with a compromise between the two site plans somehow.
Do you want to come back for site plan?
Or the building's moved all the way up.
Yeah. I think there's enough comment. Let's bring it back for site plan.
Okay.
But we're here for rezoning, correct?
Yeah.
Right now, so...
Yep, we're voting on rezoning. Any other questions, discussion?
We should describe to the applicant what we're asking.
They're recommending a condition which would ask that your, normally your site plan would be reviewed administratively. As soon as you submit it, we would schedule it then for a hearing at the Plan and Zoning Commission to be reviewed. We do review a number of types of site plans, like convenience stores, vehicle display lots already, NPC districts. So they do review a number of site plans. This isn't typically one of them, but because of the nature of some of the concerns, they're suggesting that they would make that a condition. The owner of the property would have to agree to that condition.
So I think what you're hearing from us is, we're interested in knowing where the mature trees are. Is there any way to save any of them? Without knowing where they are, we don't know that. We're expressing a concern about tall retaining walls around the sidewalks.
Can I address them, please?
You have an answer?
As to the mature trees, I mean, it costs money to take down trees, which we would prefer not to do. We like the trees. We would prefer to have them if we do. If it's going to interfere with the development, then we would have to take them down. But we would do what we can to avoid that. As far as sidewalks, I think that there are city codes that require fixing up the sidewalks or maintaining them.
We're going to require that you make sidewalk improvements if they're not in place on the public side. And then we would also want to have identified pedestrian routes to the front entrance from the public sidewalk.
Okay. The retaining walls, unless it's required for drainage, which I think somebody brought up, I'm sorry, I don't remember who, we wouldn't be putting in retaining walls just for parking or anything like that. We would avoid that at all costs. Again, that's more money. If we need them for the way that, for engineering purposes, then we would do it. That's the only way, the only reason that we would. Landscaping, I mean, I think the code is pretty clear on landscaping, and we've worked with the city before. If they're going to require something, we're going to, we're going to meet what the city's going to need. I'm sorry, I took some notes. Was there anything else?
That covers it. I, I think we need to go ahead and vote. I, there are enough questions that we'd like to see the site plan, because we don't know what the grading is.
Okay.
So if this were to pass, we're approving staff recommendation, subject to Greg's comments and subject to you bringing the site plan back.
Okay, thank you.
You. Any other discussion? Seeing none. We're going to split this up again. The first question is whether or not it's in conformance with 2020 community development plan, and the answer is, it's not, according to staff.
Current.
Currently, the current plan. Do you understand that? All those in favor, please signify. The staff's recommendation is not. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kevin. Okay. And then we'll take B and C together, and that's to amend the site plan from R160 to C1 with the conditions that we've got in there. The site plan comes back, and, okay?
What's the other condition?
Site plan comes back. I don't think that was it.
Sidewalk connector.
Sidewalk connector. That's the other one. That's right. Thank you.
Yeah.
No walls, yeah.
Minimize.
Minimize walls, yep. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. To an opposition. It's Tim and CJ. It carries. You all right with that?
I'm sorry.
Got it, Kevin? Okay. All right. It passes. Direct, committee reports. Arnold? No? Any other committees?
The Education Committee is here to report that there are a lot of newly-educated commissioners on the floor.
Great. How did that go, Jack? Pretty good?
It was awesome.
It was good?
He was really, really good. I'd like to see another follow-up in terms of this was sort of basic 101.
Mr. Chair, I have a, about a month ago, there was an appellate in front of us about building a, or moving into a building to do auto mechanic work off of Leland, off of Southwest Ninth. Kind of fell off our radar. I just wanted to know what the status was on that. If, I think they were just kind of giving them an okay to go in there, but we're coming back to us for specific things. Does that make sense?
I'll have to do some follow-up on it and report in the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Director's report.
Three things, actually, four things. As Mr. Millard pointed out, the CVS was approved by the city council, the hearing. They did reduce the height of their sign from what was proposed at the P and Z, but it was three feet taller than what the commission had approved. The neighborhood was in support of the request. So I think that the process, at least, was, opportunity was to be heard, and there was a compromise reached. The, there's no lunch with the city manager tomorrow. The next 5:30 session on May 2nd, we had hoped to do a recap of the training that you had. After the training, the morning after that, I got a call from a couple commissioners, and I think there was some confusing discussion towards the very end of the meeting about ex parte communication. And I also talked with the trainer, and the light went on as he was driving home that he thought he was talking to Board of Adjustment. The question came from a Board of Adjustment member instead of Planning Commission, so he was answering the question from a Board of Adjustment perspective.
We're a legislative body.
And so we, I reminded him that we had Planning Commissioners there, and so he felt very bad about that. He did offer to come and talk again with the group to clarify, but I said I thought we could handle it.
Well, no, let's take him up on that.
Well, I think what I would propose is that we utilize our time at the 5:30 session next time to kind of recap what you heard. If there's any additional questions that you have, think about those over the next two weeks and bring those. May 2nd, your next meeting.
Mike, did you get a copy of the workbook that you handed out?
Yeah, we, staff has that. As a matter of fact, some of the materials that are in there are things that we hand out in your Commissioner Training Notebook that we give you. You saw several ISU extension things about what a comp plan is or what zoning is.
Can we get an email on that?
On?
The book. I don't want to have you guys reproduce the book. I just would like to have a...
They handed the book out at the training. They handed, they handed the book out at the training. But you have, you have a majority of the things from it in your notebooks that we gave you. So anyway, those were the things I wanted to cover.
Any other questions? Anything else for the good of the group? Seeing none, we're adjourned. We're adjourned.